I did.
You did?
Let's go. I know my mic is on because I already made an announcement. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01. Mr. Bleecker, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secone. Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
I am here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Ms. Mavertish. And Ms. Baron.
Okay, adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Bridgewood News and the record specifying the Maua Board of Education will meet on April 4th, 2018 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Wenderkowitz, would you do the honors, please?
Sure. Hold it. Hold it. It's mine.
He got so excited.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do need an executive session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion, please. Mr. Kizmarsky and Ms. Conoco. All right, we're gonna be...
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. We'll be back in a little bit.
Including the Sanoco.
Yeah, but even just down that area?
Yeah. Open road, right? And then we went into... They wouldn't stand down. It was a start for many of the towns. But, yeah, they were fine. Finding anything and everything. But, yeah, they were fine. Finding anything and everything. So, lawyer. Code was just out. I just... Right. It didn't... He said, "I can find..." The whole committee working on that. But, the lawyers said that you know, it was... No, they just wanted to make sure we all were... Now, they have three drinks. Yeah? Wine? I wonder if they're watching. And then they have the big ones. That's right. Big stuff. Oh, big stuff, yeah.
Oh, yeah? One of them, like a soupy or something?
Yeah. That would even work. Lawyers that are back in the old three-pointers. But even then... So... Go ahead, Rob. Hit it.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. At least. My picture's not incorrect. You're... We're done. I'm done. Yeah. But it has to... It's just the same, the lack of... They could have really... Or...
Have you been over there? Is it balanced?
No, you can't. Really. The only way I see it is on the pavement coming out of the driveway. It's all filled with mud. So, you know, they're... You can see, like, the people back there. There's something going on. But it's all hidden, really. So, the only thing is somebody told you... Somebody said, "Oh, nothing will happen," at least. What I learned, I learned a lot. So, I have to eliminate that.
Yeah, at least have a document.
Yeah, I need a document. But, I think we're...
Yeah. I think it's like...
It's quite important to call you.
Oh, yeah?
To give it...
Is that me?
The person. Not a good one. Yeah, I don't have a... I don't think it's that low.
They can't even get to the rest. Smells everywhere. Where's our hideout? There's a tree truck out there.
Chippin' is right. With the trippers.
Yeah. What are they doing right now? Trees. This is like magic. Why are we following state? I mean, it's not, I'm sure it's not just Maua.
Always.
But they didn't get as much.
Yeah.
So...
They don't have that nature. We have all...
So, has anyone ever checked? Because, I mean...
Is it all on your... All on...
Right. Or even by a lot of ready... You should be... For all you...
Good God.
Such a common...
But no one's... That's the question.
Yeah. Especially when it smells around here. There's no tomorrow.
I feel like, okay, tomorrow, I bet he can go off.
There is nothing different, I mean, at all. What's the difference?
Yeah, nothing.
I haven't told you the cost of my... It's gonna be... Sixty-seven, no, it's not. Quite the sixty-eight, I mean, to me. And I don't know. It's...
It is not what... Yeah. I mean, it's not me calling my... It's lots. Like, it's a treat, though. There's big lots.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great...
No, it's... Four trees. Four... Yeah.
What's it come back?
Help me type that up.
Well, I think they did the main... They did the main...
They ruined that for us.
Yeah. They would be pretty cool. Very important. I say that's...
Do you find your flight?
Kind of like, like a little, but they actually dragged it out. That's not, because that's not there. He makes fire where it's at.
They have their own. I'm gonna go... You... Just a second. No one's interested in the word "you." Not any... It's like, you...
So, what was it? Were you concerned?
You know, over the hill, by the river, south, near Oakland. You look at the...
I'm glad you asked.
Oh, very soon. Guys, gotta come to me.
Which means...
Yeah, see, and you should come with everybody. No one ever goes...
Oh, yeah.
You know, the... Penny.
She's pretty smart, though.
Yeah.
Blonde hair.
One and...
No. Those people... They don't have...
Cruel on the pier.
Some of them.
Yeah, I agree.
So, like, I can't... They made me do it. What did I do?
You could run.
Come back.
I gave that...
Especially... When I was... Especially... In the middle of summer, it's all... And it's like a different place. There I am.
Right by the house.
You have no... Where did you buy it?
In the real town.
Not true. No, no, no. But it's miles.
Yeah. Yeah.
Another mile, yeah, I mean... You're here for... What did you...
I mean, we had to go across the ramp. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's like right there.
That's mine.
You're very nice with it. So, when Christmas comes around, I think mother... I keep figuring out who to ask, because I don't know what...
It might come.
They still work. Nice.
You took sixteen. No one...
Yes.
No one drew nothing. It's not on the...
Why? There's no need to. Nobody bothers us, that's for sure. Whoever with the helicopter, there's no trucks in...
You took sixteen.
Again, though. There's no need to. We have our own individual company back there. We have to get our own snowboard. Mr., I called a meeting for a second.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene, please. Mr. Wenderkowitz and Dr. Morthe. Okay, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify your group or identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you're referring to in your question. Anyone? Fantastic. Superintendent's report... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fezen.
Hi, John. Hi, John Fezen, 20 Falcon Court, Maua, New Jersey.
Mr. Fezen, can we just have the resolution number that you're referring to? Please.
The budget for the new year, I guess.
Okay.
Staffing, debt service.
I'll be doing a presentation and because there's no action or agenda item revolving... involving the budget tonight, we can address that at the very end.
All right, so I'll wait. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
Oh, you're absolutely right. Hi.
Hi. How are you?
Can we deviate from what we discussed, Mr. President?
I hate when you do that.
It's not hard, actually.
Only because you said so.
Thank you. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to deviate from what I discussed with our Vice President, President this evening and Ms. Baron's absence. What I would like to do is I'd like to move sixteen F up as a vote. But prior to that, I do have a couple of comments, and that is my superintendent's report for tonight. So, if we may do that, everyone, I think that would be great.
We vote no now?
Say again? No, we'll vote when I'm done. I'm just deviating a little bit from what we've done. I want to reiterate, at our last meeting, Christine Zimmerman was not here, but there were a number of different comments said, and I think it is worthy of repeating again tonight. Christine, as everyone knows, has been here for thirteen years. She has worked at Principal Elena P. Meadows, Betsy Ross, and she built a lot of strong relationships with staff and students. So, over the past five years, she has served admirably as our Director of Curriculum Instruction, and it has been a monumental task. Not only has she led, but she's also been a big catalyst for instructional change throughout our district. Rewriting curriculum, creating teacher-driven professional development, redesigning teacher-mentor program, and bringing in K-12 mindful movement. One of the things that you always say when you leave a position, no matter what it is, is that you want to leave a legacy. You want a piece of you left when you walk away. There is no doubt in our opinion, as administrators and as teachers in the district, that you have unbelievably left your legacy on this district, Christine, and our students and our staff and us as people are better for it. So, I wanted to thank you for that very much. I say that because it is very difficult to replace someone who has done such an outstanding job for our district. And when we considered our options for this, we weren't looking for Ms. Zimmerman. We were looking for someone who loved us, who knew us, who wanted to make us even better. And it's difficult to take a place that's already in a great place educationally for students, instructionally, and to bring it to the next level. We did receive over sixty-six applicants for Ms. Zimmerman's position. And after thoughtful conversation with our central office staff, it was a unanimous decision among all of us to recommend Dr. Michael Natoro, Detoro, for our position for Director of Curriculum. For those of you that know Mike, he has served proudly as Principal of Joyce Kilmer School. In his current role, he has set high expectations for student achievement and believes the primary responsibility of an educational leader is to continually enhance and improve the quality of instruction. During his work in Maua, Dr. Detoro has worked with staff members and colleagues to implement reading and writing workshop model, professional learning communities, as well as a number of other best practices. Utilizing collaborative experiences that empower our teachers and staff to create a shared vision, Dr. Detoro has helped to lead a school building from one that was in need of improvement to ranking in the top one hundred elementary schools in the state of New Jersey. Dr. Detoro's dissertation and doctoral work were immersed in theoretical frameworks of educational leadership and curriculum development, where its topic focused on the influence of curriculum customization on student achievement and language arts and mathematics. Dr. Detoro has served as our district security liaison. He has sat on the district...
But I have to say, I can't say it any better than Dr. Shown, they're tremendously big shoes to fill. But I am really looking forward to working with such a talented teaching staff and such a talented administrative team to really continue to drive this district into future success. I'm not going to say to success because it's already a tremendous success already, but I'm really looking forward to the exciting things to come, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So, thank you very much.
Perfect.
So are we.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure. It's all you now.
Sure.
Yeah. We're back in order now.
Back in order. Okay. Business Administrator Board Secretary, Mr. Bleeker.
Okay. Before I do the budget presentation, just two items to update everybody on. One is our STEAM addition to the high school. That project is currently out and on the street, as the industry term is for being an active bid. We are slated to receive bids on May 2. They'll then be reviewed by various professionals, our architect, construction manager, and attorney, and a recommendation will be made to the board following that. One other item to bring up is the Mauna Schools Foundation run on April 22. We had a meeting, I believe it was last week regarding that with various stakeholders, our maintenance team, our custodial team, representatives from the Mauna Schools Foundation to make sure we have everything coordinated for a very successful day, as it was last year, too. So, looking forward to that on April 22. And with that, I have a budget presentation for this evening as well. All right. Thank you, everybody. Tonight is going to be the second presentation on the 2018-2019 budget. The first presentation was done at our last board meeting, where we approved the submission of the primary budget to the county office. County office is still conducting the review on that. We did receive a confirmation on one aspect of the budget that they reviewed. It's been completed. They're currently reviewing the second part of it right now, and I hope to hear back from them very soon. We are still slated to, at our next board meeting, April 25, to adopt the final budget for the 1819 school year. For this evening, as the bottom of the slide indicates, I'm going to discuss a couple of different areas, that being enrollment, staffing, debt service, and special revenue. And at the very end, we have a few more items that we'll discuss at the April 25 meeting. For the first part, enrollment. Enrollment is one of the first things we look at when we begin building the budget, where it has been, where it is right now, and where we projected it would go. The in-district enrollment from October 2017 was 2,857 students. Those are in-district students, so that does not include out-of-district students. It does not include students who attend Bergen Academies or any of the other Bergen County schools, technical or vocational schools. October is usually the month that we look at. That is a month within the state DOE calendar where most enrollment figures are always taken from. There has been a decline in enrollment from a peak of 3,497 students in the 08-09 year. That's been an average decline of about 2.2% for the district. However, our projections going forward after this year, while they still do show an decline, they do show it decreasing to a decline of approximately 1% per year. So, it does seem to appear, at least on our forecasting models, that it is starting to level off.
Kyle, does that take into account what may or may not happen over by the crossroads?
It does not. It does not. Forward enrollment, one year over the next, so this is October 2016 versus October 2017, which I just recorded. So, throughout the four of the six schools, there was a decrease in enrollment. For two of the schools, we did see an increase, an overall decrease of 61 students from one year over the next. Again, to the earlier from before, these are in-district students. It does not include out-of-district students or placements at the county schools. Primary budget staffing. Within the 1819 budget, there is an allocation of $34 million allocated for salaries for the 1819 school year. It represents approximately 49.2% of the total budget. This is for salaries and compensation alone. It does not address benefits. Benefits is something that we'll discuss at the April 25 meeting. This represents approximately 480 staff. Those staff are represented by several collective bargaining associations, the Mauna Education Association, which has teaching staff, secretarial nurses, bus drivers, and custodians, the Mauna Administrators Association, the Mauna Supervisors Association. And lastly, it also includes those that are not part of the bargaining unit, independent contracts, and paraprofessions. Those with an independent contract, I should say, and paraprofessions. Within the 1819 budget, there are a few positions that we are anticipating to reduce. That would be three grade-level positions in grades K through 5, as well as in grades K through 8, two-and-a-half special education positions. Those are the reductions. However, there are also some additions that we are anticipating to add that are part of the 1819 budget. Two positions, the English as a second language, as well as a speech-language services position. Both are currently being fulfilled part-time, adding .3 time to the English as a second language teacher, as well as the .375 would make those positions full-time. There's an added benefit also to the speech-language services, which I'll go to in one moment. Other positions that we are looking to add, full-time positions, are a psychologist at the K-3 level, as well as a supervisor instruction at the K-5 level. As I mentioned, one other staffing, we call it realignment. This is where we reallocate some of our resources, the employee or the position that I was speaking about previously. By increasing that position to full-time, it would eliminate the need to have some services provided by an outside company. The next item for discussion tonight is debt service. This is another portion of the budget. It represents any bonds that we have outstanding. Right now, we currently have, for the 1819 year, we have two bonds that are still going to be outstanding. Those bonds are fully funded by the tax levy. There receives no state aid or offset to it. For the 1819 year, $1,600,000 is scheduled for principal and interest payments combined for those two bonds. The bonds were initially, were originally approved by the voters of the township in 2002 and 2003. They were then subsequently refinanced in 2009 and 2011. The 2009 bond was originally issued in 2002 for the building of Elena P. Meadows Elementary School. That bond is expected to be paid off in full in the 2022-23 year. The other bond that's currently outstanding was refinanced in 2011. It was originally bonded in 2003 for additions and renovations at the high school and at the middle school. Again, this is slated to be fully paid off in a couple of years, in the 23rd year. Okay. Special revenue. Another area of the budget, special revenue is the fund area of the budget, where we maintain any federal, state, or local grants and funds that we receive that are dedicated to a specific purpose. Most commonly, or the primary ones here are federal funds, such as ESSA, which is formerly known as NCLD, also IDEA from state of New Jersey. They give us non-public grants, where we are the custodian of funds for several of the non-public schools that are located within the township, as well as local grants. These are anything that might come from the home school associations for dedicated purposes within the district. For special revenue, we anticipate federal funds, that was the IDEA and ESSA funds that I said previously, in the amount of $695,000 for next year. We anticipate some state funds in the amount of $22,000. Those, again, are the ones that are dedicated for non-public purposes, and that totals an anticipated revenue for the 1819 school year of just over $700,000. That brings us to the end of the budget presentation for this evening. As I said before, there was one previous presentation. There's also going to be one more on April 25. At that meeting, we're going to review some of the special ed portions of the budget that are included, benefits, as well as do an overall summary of the budget for that evening. With that, I'll take any questions from the board. Yes?
Could you address the anticipated positions to add, the role played, between played by the supervisor instruction K to 5?
You got that?
Yes. Thank you, Deb. The goal is for the person to be able to help articulate instruction K through 12 in working with our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction. That would be the purpose, the role of the supervisor of K-5.
We had, we've had 6 to 12, and Peter, as you know, for a long period of time, sixth, grade 6 to 12 supervisors. What we haven't had is somebody who is overseeing just K to 5 for that articulation. And although Christine has done a phenomenal job K to 12 curriculum-wise, our supervisors do a phenomenal job 6 to 12, to have somebody who is dedicated to oversee the curricular work, to be sure that it is aligned and moving where it needs to go, more hands-on than an overall director could be with everything. I think it is going to be an awesome addition to our district. I really do. Awesome. It has been one, to be honest with you, that our K to 5 administrators have wanted for some time. So, this has been almost two or three years in the making, you know, with rationale and objectives, and what can we do, and why do we need this, and how will it work, and what benefit will it be? And when you come up with a list like they did, you can't help but say, you know something? Let's give them what they need to make us better.
As well as our supervisor 612, they would love to be working with someone K-5, so that we can truly...
Six graders are ready.
Yeah, so we can address any gaps that exist.
Also, a guarantee then, continually between among this elementary schools now, which sometimes a couple get ahead of the other, and then the parents go, how come and why?
You want there to be as much consistency as possible in having somebody oversee just that area, which is a large portion of our student population.
We've been trying to address that for years.
No doubt. No doubt. And I'm saying, the administrators have brought it up for years, so here we are. Perhaps in the future, we can, you know, consider more. That's the school.
Kyle, do you want to mention that we're not quitting the capital items? And normally, we have capital items as part of our budget presentation. We're taking it to a breeder this year on capital items, capital items outside of the cycle.
Sure. Anytime we want to withdraw funds from our capital reserve account to address different initiatives throughout the district, there's two opportunities to do so. One is through the budget process, which would be at this time where we identify projects and we're going to withdraw capital funds from the capital reserve account to address during the next school year. The other method of doing that is simply throughout the course of the year by requesting permission from the county, just letting them know that we'd like to withdraw funds for this purpose. We show them that it's part of our low-range facilities plan, and that's the other allowable to do. In speaking with the finance committee, knowing that we have the STEAM project slated for this year, and that's going to be a significant project in and of itself, we decided not to have any projects included within the budget, that we will address those during the course of the year as they come. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Mr. Fair. Anything for us tonight?
I just want to welcome Dr. Dettoro. I'm very proud of you and say to have you. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Barron is not here. I do not have a report in her absence. Board Committee reports. Anything from anyone? All righty. We have any board member remarks or additional comments on non-agenda items?
On March 29, Ms. Secone and myself attended the Bergen County School Board, joint Bergen County-Paseo School Board dinner at Maggiano's. It was attended by legislators. On the 39th, we had Cardinelli, we had Chapezi, and thankfully, Ott wasn't there. But what was interesting, I shouldn't do that, was that all the candidates, all the legislators there, except one, got up and said, "I'm going to do this for you. I'm going to get this for you, and I'm going to do that." And everyone's, "Eh." But the curmudgeon, Gerald Cardinelli, got up and said, "Look, we only have a finite number, so we'll work within that number and do the best we can." He was the most honest of all the politicians there. And he has been booed at teacher legislative luncheons, but he says what's on his mind. He says the truth. That's it. It was a great meeting.
Also, Holly Chapezi mentioned that in northern New Jersey, there will be a meeting about school security coming up soon.
Peter's sending information about that today.
I went to her first one.
Did you?
It was helpful.
Oh.
It was very informative. Variety, you know, from countywide, statewide, all the way down to even, you know, local teachers, you know, in different districts.
Sure, you hear different things.
It's good. I encourage you to go see it.
Anyone else? Okay. Like to entertain a motion on 14A and B, please. Mr. Wenderkowitz and Mr. Gallo. Roll call, please.
Okay. Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes, on A, but B I must abstain.
Ms. Secone.
Again, yes, on A, and I am abstaining on B.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva.
I need to abstain on both, please. I'd like to entertain a motion on 15A through M. Mr. Gallo and Mr. Wenderkowitz. Roll call, please. Do we have any questions or discussion? Sorry. Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secone.
I am abstaining on 15B, check number, check number 090123 and 090221.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo.
I am saying yes on everything except item B. I will abstain from check number 090108.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva.
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion on 16A through E and G through U, since we've already taken F. Got to be, otherwise, Peter would have called me on it, so.
You're right.
Mr. Wenderkowitz. We haven't gotten there yet. Mr. Wenderkowitz and Dr. Morthe, does anybody have any questions?
Item C, 16C, Ariana Huervo, a teacher of Chinese. Is she the person that we've met for a number of years now, or is this her Chinese?
No, but she's, you're remembering correctly, Mike.
Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are. But I think she was very good, and she's, but of, not actually Chinese descent, but of like, I don't know exactly where she's from, but an interesting mix. But anyway, from...
And he has been booed at teacher legislative luncheons, but he says what's on his mind, he says the truth. That's it. It was a great meeting.
Also, Holly Shapizzi mentioned that in northern New Jersey, there will be a meeting about school security coming up soon.
Peter's sending information about that today.
I went to her first.
Did you?
It was helpful.
Oh.
Very informative. Variety, you know, from countywide, statewide, all the way down to even, you know, local teachers, you know, their side of, you know, in different districts.
Sure, you hear different things.
It's good. I encourage him to go see it.
Anyone else? Okay, like to entertain a motion on fourteen A and B, please. Mr. Windrickowitz and Mr. Gallo, roll call, please.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes, on A, but B, I must abstain.
Ms. Segone?
Again, yes, on A, and I abstain on B.
Thank you. Mr. Kismarski? Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
I need to abstain on both, please. I'd like to entertain a motion on fifteen A through M. Mr. Gallo and Mr. Windrickowitz, roll call, please. Do we have any questions or discussion? Sorry. Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Segone?
I am abstaining on fifteen B, check number, check number zero nine zero one two three and zero nine zero two two one.
Mr. Gallo?
I am saying yes on everything except item B. I will abstain from check number zero nine zero one zero eight.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion on sixteen A through E and G through U, since we've already taken F. Got to be, otherwise Peter would have called me on it, so. Mr. Windrickowitz? We haven't gotten there yet. Mr. Windrickowitz and Dr. Morthee, does anybody have any questions?
Item C, sixteen C, Ariana Huergo, a teacher of Chinese. Is she the person that we've met for a number of years now, or is this her Chinese?
No, but she's, you're remembering correctly, Mike.
Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are. But I think she was very good and she's, but of, not actually Chinese descent, but of like, I don't know exactly where she's from, but an interesting mix. But anyway, from what, no, we can't go, sorry.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so no questions. Roll call, please, Mr. Leager.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Mr. Windrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Segone? Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski? Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva?
Yes. Okay, seventeen, public questions or comments. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
John Faison, Twenty Falcon Court, Maua, New Jersey. Are we ready for this? Are you ready for this?
Ready as we can be at this point. We don't know exactly what effect that's going to have on us at this point.
You mean the population?
The population, because the town will increase twelve to fifteen percent. That's a big change. And a lot of people have to be ready for this. My good friend Michael told me that you've met with the council once, I think. And that's somewhat surprising because of, this is such an important issue, for the Board of Ed to only meet with the council once in the past year concerns me a lot. You would think they would be meeting like once a month. They've been doing this for two years.
Up until this point, we've had as much information as the rest of the public has, and there hasn't been anything to discuss.
Nor is our input required sought out or needed for the town council to approve a settlement, nor should it be, frankly, it's not our say.
Right.
As much as it affects us, and it will affect us, I can assure you, Supreme Court of State of New Jersey has decided this is a constitutionally accepted thing, and our council will and should unfortunately vote yes on whatever it is.
Oh, they voted already?
Well, this is just, this is just one. I mean, our legal requirement is probably much higher than what the crossroads gets to do, so.
Oh, it'll be-
The concern isn't the crossroads property, it's what's coming after the crossroads property.
Twenty twenty-five?
No.
No.
Still part of, still part of this round.
Well, this eight hundred, I believe, is just a-
Well, eight hundred units isn't our whole obligation in terms of the fair share housing requirement.
Yeah, this is just the start.
Right.
This is, this is the first scene in what could be a nightmare. This is just the first scene. There could be two or three more settlements, I don't know.
Well, this is an offer. The eight hundred that they voted on is an offer.
I know, but the eight hundred they voted on is not eight hundred, you know, just for that, and there's still, there's still requirements out there.
Right, eight hundred, I think, was what, seventy percent of the obligation for this round? Right, so, so the good thing-
I have to understand also that that eight hundred also includes twenty percent of it being senior housing. They don't make babies anymore in senior housing.
Right.
I know I'm being flippant, but we cannot address this problem because, for one, it's going to take ten years for this to evolve.
Right.
And number two, we won't know where these children are coming from until they actually register. They're not only going to come to the second grade, they're going to be scattered throughout the entire district. And so at that point, we'll have a handle on what's going on. Now, you've noticed in our statistical reports that our enrollments have been dropping, so we have some room. So it's not a crisis at this point, not until they come through our door and say, "Hi, we're bringing our one or two kids into the district."
We will be reaching out to the township for further advice from them, on their knowledge of what the settlement looks like. I'm sure they had some planners involved in evaluating the settlement, and we'll be reaching out.
I hope so, because you told me that there's two components. There's the desk space, which, from those numbers that I saw, there's space, but what more, what's more important are the teachers. You know, as you've said to me, it's, a desk is one thing, but I have to have somebody in front of the classroom, and all those teachers, significant cost.
Right, frankly, and the biggest concern from our point of view would be if any of these settlements include a pilot program, where there's no additional tax revenue to pay for those extra teachers. So that's, that's the bigger issue, I think, for this board. We'll have to see what happens there.
Well, our mayor has said to a group of senior citizens that he feels that there will not be any zero impact on the town for the eight hundred, which I find a little hard to believe.
They said that in the eighties when we went through the first round of Maua, it was only about, you know, seven to ten thousand people, there would be no impact, obviously.
There was an impact later.
You know, there is an impact. We don't know what that is, unfortunately. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where we won't know it until it's here and we see it, we're staring right down it, and we won't be receiving the unfortunate increase in the tax base from it. You know, there's also a settlement component, a dollar amount, I believe, is crossroads piece that doesn't go to us either, which is unfortunate. But that's, you know, the difference between the council and the school board. We'll just have to figure it out, I guess, as we always have since the nineteen-
Do you have a plan going forward as to meeting committees, groups, et cetera, et cetera?
Again, there's still nothing to meet about. I mean, the eight hundred is just a number right now. We're with you.
You know, because I'm a concerned citizen.
As, as are we. Yep. We're not doing this for fun, I promise.
The more meetings I go to, the more concerned I get.
Yep.
And then I'm going to get upset.
Yep.
Back in two thousand eight, we asked our township officials what they, what they see as the forecast for increased population in the town, and we were told, "There will not be any. There's no property around for them to develop." And now you have eight hundred places going across those, you have Apple Ridge, luckily they're single, they're single family, and you have an enormous amount of condos being built, where there are more condo people than there are single resident people. So we can't really rely on anything long-term from our officials, because they're the same way, they've got a Ouija boy.
That's what makes me concerned.
That's what we are to do, that's all that we can do at this point. We have to see hard numbers.
Will they be available?
Will they be available? I like that.
No.
Unfortunately, you won't know that until yet.
Right, I mean, look, you know, it's not, you know, it's not going to happen tomorrow, you know, places still need to be built, we're still years down the road.
Oh, yeah, there'll be a year of planning.
Right, right.
Yeah. But it's very concerned. The other thing I found, I'll just pass this around. I just found out about this when the mayor told us. This gentleman Ziggy Wolf owns the crossroads.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, so I'm the last one to the party, I guess.
Somebody has to be.
Yeah, well, I'm in. But he also owns the MacArthur Ridge Strip Mall. Does he own the A and P, the acne, does he own the acne too? Does he own anything else?
Why are we talking about?
All right. Deep pockets, to say the least. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Faison.
It's an executive session discussion.
Hi, I'm Sue Brand, Five Decker Court, Maua. I'm addressing the same issue I addressed at the last board meeting, which some of you are not here. So the student government was, my son is the president, Jack Brand, his friend Dante LaRocco is the vice president. After the walkout, briefly, no, no, just catch people up. My son was suspended from the student government, he's being reinstated on April sixteenth. His vice president was kicked off the student government. I expressed my displeasure at the way the administration handled the entire walkout situation. I came to the board to explain my displeasure and to ask for some intervention or attention to the matter. That was, that was two weeks ago, nobody. I understand that perhaps your role is simply to listen to me, but that's not all you have to do. I didn't get any response from anybody. I didn't hear from the superintendent, I didn't hear from Mrs. Barron. Just even simply to address my concerns at the way I felt in high school, managed the walkout, handled the walkout, handled the suspensions, handled the student government specifically, I got nothing. I, I would expect more from sixteen year in the school district. I have three more to go, and believe you me, I'm starting to really rethink what I'm doing here. I don't understand where my town and my schools have gone. I thought up until March thirteenth that I was in a pretty great town. I asked Pascal for the policy, he sent me a very brief rundown of the policy. I understand the Board of Education makes and approves the policies, and the administration administers the policy. This was subjective, it was interpreted in a way that could have been interpreted any which way. Did the policy uphold his decision? Probably. But just because you can do something, doesn't mean you have to, and doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. This was not the right thing to do. What this did was divided the high school. You don't have a great community of kids now. You have a student government that has completely fallen apart. Whatever their effectiveness or responsibility is in the school, whether you think that's a lot, whether you think it's figureheads, whether you think it's just kids running for popularity contests, the student government is a shambles at this point. It didn't work. The plan to punish the student government officers because they had a higher level of responsibility to the school, which is what Pascal told me, to punish them more severely than the other kids who walked out, I don't agree with the decision. All that did was divide the high school further. So for those of you who don't have kids in the high school who aren't on the ground in there, that's what's happened. When you walk in the high school, you don't see mayhem, it's not a divided war, but it's there. This divided a lot of people, and it didn't have to. We have a lot going on in this town. You know, from a year ago, there's a lot of stuff that this town, school-wide, council-wide, community-wide, we have to manage. We can't be affording to divide our students, our children. And that's all that this did, and the fact that nobody, not one of you, reached out to me to say, "I heard what you said, and thank you for, thank you for saying it. Thank you for standing up for our kids." Well, I heard what Mrs. Barron says, she agreed with Pascal at disciplining the kids. That's, that's what I got out of it.
Let's do this, Ms. Brand. I am aware of all the conversations that you had with Mr. Pascal, we speak frequently. So I was aware that he met with you many times, and that you had called him, and he had called you. And there will always be things that we will agree to disagree on, there's no doubt. Ms. Barron did make a statement in regard, which was kind of what it is that you were talking about, but when she stood at the microphone, she had made the statement in regard to the ability for students to do what it is that they did and our ability to reprimand. But we can still agree to disagree. So let me start first by saying, I apologize that you feel that you weren't heard, I can guarantee you that the members of this board heard you. I think, I think you're interested perhaps in two things. I think that I would like you to sit with me first, if you would, and I'll call you in and let's talk, and I can kind of delineate how you're feeling. I know how you're feeling, it's not that I didn't hear you, and Mr. Pascal did explain to me exactly how it was that you were feeling. And I can understand how this could be a difficult time for you and your family, and for Dante's family as well. So let me reach out to you tomorrow. Let's have a plan to come in and sit and talk with me first, that's typically the next step when you're saying, "Okay, the principal didn't make me all sorts of happy," so you move on to me. So let's sit down and talk. If after that conversation you feel that you're heard, I can't change what's in place already. If we're looking to move forward perhaps differently in the future, as you said, you have three more years, maybe there'll be more events and things that go on that you may think could have been handled differently, I'd like to hear about that from you. But I can't change what's in place right now. So we can talk about that, and then I can take what you say and I can summarize that for the Board of Ed. And if the next step of what you're looking for is for there to be a formal response from the Board of Ed in regard to whatever we determine the specific request you have to be, I can certainly make that happen for you. So let's two-step this if we would. I'll reach out to you tomorrow, we'll decide on a convenient time, we'll talk, and then I can take what it is and how you feel, and get that to the board in a summary. And if you say, "Hey, listen, I want to know how they feel too," then I will prepare everything for them, as I always do. They will work together amongst themselves to come up with a collective statement, and then we'll make sure we get back to you. I think that that makes the most sense at this point, because it becomes very personal and very sensitive, because it's about your child, and the board will, will pretty much not get into a specific thing in regard to individual students, but they can however comment on a course of action, whether they approve, disapprove, but at least know that you've been heard. So I hope that that makes you feel a little bit better at this point. I will reach out to you tomorrow morning. Consider it done. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hi. Couple of questions just in follow-up to security. A few weeks ago, Dr. Shou, you told us that they were, one of the things that you were looking into was a scanner for licenses, when they come to school, they scan it.
Lobby guard.
Yeah. And you had said that this checks against people in the database or in a system or whatever it is for Megan's law.
Correct.
At that point, I had asked if there's any possibility of checking against any other criminal activity or anything else you said you were going to look into. Have you gotten any?
I, I didn't. You did ask, I didn't, but I will tomorrow and I'll get back to you.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I don't know what they could look at, but I think-
I don't know what the system does.
Because Megan's law isn't really applicable to gun activity, you know what I mean? It's not really-
True, I understand exactly what you're saying. I will get back to you.
Thank you. A question for you, is this school put, I'm going to say, on alert for children that have been involved in law enforcement? Understanding there's confidentiality and all that type of information, but-
I don't know, I don't, you have to be a little more specific.
So, you know, in many instances, we've seen that some of these teens have been troubled teens, they've had other behaviors, they've had run in with law, that type of thing. Obviously, there's sensitivity and confidentiality, and they're minors and all that, but is there a way that the school system can be put, at least somehow notified, to kind of pay, pay attention to these kids, if you know what I'm saying, without getting into confidentiality laws or breaking any laws? I don't know, is there something that you all can be working with law enforcement, kind of get that heads up?
We already do.
Okay, so-
We have something every year, we sign called a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement, they're both used. And what that does is that allows us to share with the police any matters that we may have that could be a community issue, and vice versa.
But with names, they're allowed to give you names?
They share everything with me.
Okay.
Now, what happens with that, when you talk about community-wise, I don't share that community-wise, and I typically don't share it with the board either as far as names, but I will the principal of the building, and they will with their respective teachers. We do that all the time.
And what about the school psychologists?
Oh, certainly.
Are they involved?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay.
But that's already infused.
Has anyone been looking into bulletproof glass and metal detectors?
We're in the process of reviewing a number of different things, but we're not at a point to make a recommendation in regard to that.
Okay, again, I'm going to ask for timelines, do you know when you're going to have some of those things identified? Bulletproof glass, metal detectors, kind of thing. You know, these aren't secretive things, so it's something that would be obvious to public, which is why I ask.
I, I think we're probably not in a position to commit to any of that stuff. I mean, as we've talked about before, the people at this table, we're not security experts, so we're relying on those who are at the police department. And if the police department comes to us and says, "You know, I think you guys need bulletproof glass and metal detectors," then that's something that we're going to take a look at. But at this point, that's, that's not where we're at.
And you don't form an opinion and say, "This is what we think the schools need," what's your opinion on that? You're just waiting to push of information from them to you?
So we set up a email address that's sort of a central collection point for all kinds of, you know, anybody who has a recommendation. All that information is shared with the police department, and there may be some things that Captain Jaffe looks at and says, "You know what, we should, we should look at this." There's probably a lot that, you know, he looks at and says, "You know, that doesn't make any sense." So all that information is forwarded to the police department, and they'll take a look at it, and again, if they-
And or you don't make a formal?
We, we hear the recommendation that they make, and I think we would be hard-pressed to say, "No, we're not going to do that." If Captain Jaffe says, "I think you should do," if Captain Jaffe says, "I think the ridge should be pink," I got a guy. You know, but it's, you know, the recommendation is going to come from the professionals, not,
But it's, you know, the, the recommendation is going to come from the professionals, not, you know, not from us. If, if they don't recommend it, you know, I know the recommendation has been made on that, you know, on that, that email address. That information has been forwarded to them. And again, if that's a recommendation that they make, I think that's something that we take, you know, very seriously.
All the recommendations that were made, they have all in a list. So they are, they are vetting all of those. I think there may have been even some of the things we may have even thought of on our own.
Yep.
And they go from big to small.
But still no timelines for it?
No.
Timelines for implementation, I think we need to first talk about a timeline for a decision, and then an implementation, because that would be, I don't have that either. No, can't help you. No, because, no, I'm working with the Chief of Police, and we have been talking about metal detectors, and we have been talking about bulletproof glass. But in order for him to make a recommendation, I appreciate this, he wants to do it with research, and he wants to do it with understanding. He's not going to stand before the board and say, let's do this because I think it's a good idea. He's going to say, let's do this because I think it is in the best interest of student safety, and this is the reason why. We're still in the process of doing that.
Right, that said, if there's something that, you know, that they don't recommend, we're not going to be out here saying, hey, by the way, the police said, you know, don't recommend. That's not information that we want to have out in the public, doesn't help anybody. So you're not going to hear about the things that, you know, that didn't get recommended either.
We're, what I can say, and, and, and what I can say is, is that security has been on the foremost of our minds since this happened. And everyone that I work with-
Since before this happened, long time before.
But even, but even more so now, you're absolutely right, but even more so now. And anybody who works with me can absolutely attest to the fact that it is the number one thing that's discussed every day. Mr. Bleeker spent two hours, three hours today sitting with our supervisor of, of facilities, talking about the things that I mentioned last time, meeting with the electrical contractors to determine about blue lights, and determine about making, you know, other, these, these man traps, and what we do to divide those, and second sets of locks, the lobby guard, and what can we do with other buildings in regard to that. All I can tell you is that it, it absolutely, positively is, is continuing. There are big-ticket items, like perhaps doing something with the GW office, or the Betsy Ross office, and making that. But, but metal detectors are certainly on that list. I don't know when we're going to make a decision about that, I'm going to be honest.
I'm going to keep asking, you know that.
Well, and maybe, all right, and maybe what I'll do is I'll just include it in part of my superintense report, and I'll say-
No decision yet.
Yes, but, but how often do you, you know, how much are you going to want to say that? You know what I mean? No decision yet.
These are big decisions, and they encompass five schools. We are not going to need your reaction to all of this. Sorry, I understand, I, I completely understand. It's, you know, it's non-stable, it's scope.
Right, and again, to-
I would like to see movement, that's all I'm asking.
I know, I know.
Keep coming and having the conversations, I think it's a good place to be.
Right, but what, the other thing you need to understand, I know you want to see movement, you're not going to see all the movement that's happening. There's a lot of movement that's happening. If your measure of success is you see something, you're probably going to be disappointed, because, and, and we're, and, and we can't keep on saying, you know, we haven't decided about this, haven't decided about that, because, again, we don't necessarily want, want people to know what we have and have not done, so.
One other question for you, I did hear that there may be consideration of thinking they're calling these the resource officers?
Are we thinking about?
I heard that it's a school resource. I don't know what it is, but I've heard there-
SRO. So we did have a conversation, we sat down with Chief Vitale and Captain Jaffe, and one of the items we did discuss are SRO officers, and, and what, and what that would mean. You know, an SRO officer is a school resource officer that receives intensive training to work in a building with students, as opposed to a class-three officer, which other districts have, which is a retired police officer, that doesn't have that school piece of training. So we're in the process of talking about that. And I will, at some point, make a recommendation to the board based on what Chief Vitale and I think would be best, and where that, where that would go. So it is a discussion.
My last question is, I heard that it was in consideration for middle and high schools, is that correct?
We haven't decided anything at all as to the placement at, at all.
Okay, so then I'm hearing something that's not?
Uh, yes, and unfortunately, I think what you're doing, what others have done, because I have fielded phone calls, is you're listening to some social media that's out there. Okay, good.
No, I'm not a social media person.
No, because there were some postings, no. There were some inaccurate postings, I swear, that said that we were putting, I was fielding phone calls about, you're putting armed guards in every school, and what are you doing, and the metal detectors are going in, and it's just, it goes out there, and then people believe it's true, as opposed to just picking up the phone and saying, hey, listen, is this what I'm hearing? So that was on social media, it is a great question, it is absolutely under consideration, that I, I, you know, look to work with Chief Vitale, and perhaps make a recommendation to the board for something that could go into place for the eighteen, nineteen school year. You're welcome.
Brooke Gaslow, five fifty-two, Adirondack Court. I'm just wondering, I know there's a lot of focus on the school safety, there's a lot of focus on the steam building being built. Are we still focusing on, like, this technology component with the eventually moving to a one-to-one? Because, like, my kids got their first computers when they were four, they all need to work on Google Classroom, so now I'm buying them their second computers.
Understood.
And, like-
It is a really, really, really great question, and the answer is, Mr. Kuzmarsky said, is head of our tech committee, along with Mr. Wenderkowitz, is, and somebody else, I'm sorry, Ms. Secone. Yes, 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 and more yes. I do not anticipate moving to a one-to-one at the high school, or the middle school for that matter, next year. Those things need to be budgeted for, because you're not looking at a hundred computers, you're looking at hundreds. We're currently in a three-year lease program with all the computers we have in both buildings. That lease runs out at the end of next year, so it is our hope, and we will begin to do presentations about this, it is our hope to be able to move toward outfitting everyone at the high school with one, and working toward a modified at the middle school. So that's, it's a great question, we haven't lost sight of it. The other thing is, is that the computers at the high school, there are four different ones at this time. We bought new ones, there were other ones that weren't so old, so it is our hope to do it the right way, which is to get every child exactly the same computer, so that their format is the same. So unfortunately, for the next year, you got to do what it is you got to do with your kids as far as new computers, but they should last. But yes, we are, and we've not lost sight.
Our technology presentation, how many?
Yes, and the only reason that we pushed it to May, the only reason that we, only reason that we pushed that to May is because we have the budget presentations. But yes, and it is an excellent question, and thank you, please.
So in May, we'll have a technology presentation?
In May, May fifth, ninth-ish. I don't know what the date is.
Anyone else? Okay, motion to close. Ms. Conoco and Mr. Gallo, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I didn't realize you were a doctor when I saw that, like, I apologize if I- Oh, so you did this after ten years of law enforcement? And then I was looking at your resume, and I was like, there's no date, so I was, I was like, oh, I never congratulated you. Congratulations, Ariana. So you did it while teaching? While being principal and doing a district? Wow, pretty, pretty impressive, and having like, three little ones? Oh, my God.